Good morning and welcome to the February 18th Special Board Meeting Work Session. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Present.
I can't hear him.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis. Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to confirm that all board members and administrators are connected to this meeting. So if each person would confirm that they can see, hear, or both when asked, please do so. Mr. Vaughn.
Both.
Mrs. Bratz.
Both.
Mrs. Carpus.
Both.
Dr. Smilak.
Both.
Mr. Nucio.
Both.
And John Schweitzer is both. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, I can. It's being livestreamed.
Thank you. Board members and administration, if at any time during the meeting you cannot hear or see the other participants, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed. Dr. Smilak, please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if the livestreaming stops for any reason, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed. This meeting will be conducted electronically in accordance with amended substantive House Bill 197 and House Bill 404, as more specifically detailed on the attached notice to this morning's agenda. At this point, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0288, Resolution suspending requirements for all in-person meetings under board bylaws.
Second.
I have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2021-0288. Any questions or comments from the board? Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-0288 has been approved. Today's meeting is a discussion regarding the potential abolishment of the Parma City School District Pleasant View Preschool Child Care Program effective June 10th, 2021. I would like to take a moment and thank everybody for the correspondence we've received over the last week regarding this issue. They were very well thought out and very passionate in many cases. And quite honestly, we have received them right up through this morning. So that is the reason we are having this Special Board meeting, this work session, so that we can discuss the issues that were brought about in these correspondents over the last week. With that, at this point, I turn it over to Dr. Smilak, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer, and thank you to the board. Just wanted to make sure I emphasize that we appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion today. You know, we had this resolution last week as we sensed some community concern. We pulled the resolution and, you know, gave us time to really square our shoulders, so to speak, and have an informed conversation and really lay out the rationale to you for what we have presented in the form of a resolution. So thank you for making the time today. It's always better to be able to have some open discussion and not be, you know, constrained by what would be a typical, you know, board meeting. So we look forward to that presentation. Pam, can I share my screen at this point?
Sure. I have to find you on here.
Okay. So we'll walk through this, and I think probably the best way to go through this is to take questions at the end. And that's not trying to mute anybody, but just realizing that folks may have already had a question answered as we go through the presentation. So just wanted to first outline, you know, the mindset. As we've really built this resolution and had these discussions, you know, with our senior leadership team, with Ms. Villic, who's probably watching this call, she's our First Step Director, Mr. Hoon, with Ms. Gross, with Ms. Plageman, and Mrs. Stropko, who are on the call, we've really come to the conclusion that we're essentially over-serving, really an undercharging in terms of tuition, a population that we don't actually legally need to provide services for. And that's actually coming at the expense of a population that has a legal right to the best education we can provide. And as we go through the presentation today, you'll understand, you know, why we've come to this conclusion and why that's a really important part of the why behind the resolution. So just some best facts, just, you know, again, to provide some context for what Pleasant View Daycare has provided. It does serve infants, toddlers, and preschoolers, preschoolers being aged three to four. It's open to any parent regardless of residence, and that's, again, an important function to outline in that, you know, many of the correspondences that we've received have been from outside the district. And I want the board to keep that in mind as we go ahead. Current enrollment is 22 students, and half of those live outside the district. The cost is $210 per week for an infant, $195 per week for a toddler, and preschoolers are $87.50 for half a day, which many are, and then 175 per week if you're there for the whole day. This actually takes, in terms of space, four classrooms at Pleasant View. Infants have a room, toddlers have a room, three-year-olds have a room, and then four-year-olds have a room. So that's sort of the nuts and bolts. Now, as we get into the problems, and again, I want to focus on really two different populations. One is the population that we have a legal mandate to serve, and that's really who we're underserving right now. And Tiffany's going to outline how we want to improve our services to them through this elimination at daycare. And then the second piece is that population we are essentially over-serving through the provision of this daycare. So Tiffany's going to talk about what we are faced with in terms of the continuum of services at First Step. Tiffany?
Thank you, Dr. Smilak. So I'm going to outline the problems, and just so we're aware, First Step is, you know, a peer model program. We, I have students with identified disabilities. We have settings where it's either eight plus eight, where it's eight students identified and eight peer models, or eight students identified and four peer models. So right now, we are currently underserving our student population that we are mandated to serve. So I want to go into detail about that specifically with 15 students who are currently accessing our scholarship program and should be attending First Step but are attending private or non-chartered facilities in this area because we have to outplace, meaning that we cannot educate in our setting. And the reason being is these 15 students really need that full-day support. A lot of our identified students that are outplaced right now either have multiple disabilities or are identified with autism. And that full-day support, which we don't currently offer at First Step and find a need to do so, that is costing our district $283,000 just for outplacements when really and truly we should be educating them in our setting. Our families who pursue this scholarship, one of the reasons why they do a full-day setting is they usually receive what we call ABA therapy. That's Applied Behavior Analysis, and that's therapy in addition to educating our students, but also developing skills that are needed for this specific disability, learning social and identifying significant problems based upon behavior. So it's very intensive. So you have that educational side, and then you have that therapy to improve social behavior. In addition, our students become school-aged. They almost always, once they're outplaced, so if we're talking about these 15 students, they don't come back to our district. And so we're losing, right now, this current school year, 15 kids at $283,000 when we could educate those students if we had a full-day program. So, you know, building that capacity and including that programming within our district with our identified students that are potentially Parma City School District students.
Yeah, and that's, you know, the population we're underserving, obviously. And then again, focusing on the population that we're essentially over-servicing. What I mean by that is, you know, this isn't a legally mandated approach. This is something we've provided, and in some cases, you know, it's become a luxury that is not something that we want to continue to subsidize. This is Pleasant View Daycare, and I think the board's familiar with these numbers. You've seen these, but we wanted to, again, project them as, we know you are watching certainly, but many people will watch later. It's essentially one account, and Sean's looked at it that way, Rose Gross has looked at it that way, Kristen Plageman's looked at it that way. EDC is extended daycare, and that's students in our school who need to come to school early and be supervised or stay after school late and be supervised. EDC has always run a profit where we're able to take that money and then subsidize the actual daycare at Pleasant View, which is a pretty significant, runs a pretty significant deficit each year. And so you see, these are, you know, not just COVID numbers. COVID numbers have picked up a little bit in terms of how much money we've had to transfer from EDC to Pleasant View. But, you know, we're at $90,000. We had been at $70,000. So again, that's money that we're taking out of the EDC folks and moving it over to be able to make payroll essentially at Pleasant View, Pleasant View Daycare. I think, and I think this is probably one of the more difficult points that we want to make. But, you know, essentially, we've had to raise funding in EDC, which are Parma students and Parma families, raise tuition there, in part because of the subsidies that we are paying back to the Pleasant View Daycare side, which, again, many of which are not our residents, and it is not a legally mandated service. And so you've seen some raises, just modest raises. And, you know, one of the questions, and we can certainly take questions later, is, you know, why didn't you raise money and tuition sooner? We weren't able to. Previous boards of education wouldn't entertain that. So we have raised in past years, and again, this is money on our working-class families of Parma who've got to send their kids because they're not able to get home right after school. They send their kids to EDC. We're taking more money out of their pockets to put it into, you know, the Pleasant View Daycare. So two problems then, right? Underserving the current population in which we're mandated to serve, essentially over-serving a population that we really have no mandate to serve. And our proposal then is to end Pleasant View Daycare. But it goes beyond that. It's not just ending the daycare, it's improving what we then offer and can offer at First Step. So I'm going to turn it back over to Tiffany, and she's going to talk about with the four classrooms that are currently Pleasant View Daycare, what do we want to do with those to better meet the needs of students that we have to meet by law? So Tiffany, you want to go through what those four classrooms would become?
Sure. So we have four open classrooms if this were to be a reality. And the ideas surrounding these four classrooms, the first one being, you know, allowing our kids to work with fine arts and to be building in a maker space setting. So connecting our curriculum with themes, which we currently do, but making a connection to STEM and the arts. Having our kids building, connecting, sculpting, mixing tools, fabrics and decorations, writing materials, and electronics and technology would be in one of these spaces marked for arts and fine arts. We really need a focused sensory room that's therapeutic and facilitative. So, you know, it's really twofold. It's to apply sensory-based motor strategies in order to have our students understand and respond to sensory processing. It's structured space where students can organize, neutralize, and explore sensory in their own terms. And it's really and truly building the sense of sensory exploration and safety so our kids have that self-awareness skill and emotional control when they become school-aged and are accessing kindergarten within our district. A third area, a third classroom, is intensive behavioral therapy room. Right now, we have BCBA's, they're board-certified behavior analysis. We fund them out of Title VI, and they work primarily on Tier One PBIS, which at the First Step program would be a socially-emotional second step program where kids are learning to listen, pay attention, manage behavior, and get along with others. So that is for identified students and also our peer models. In addition, our BCBA's work very closely with our staff, are certified and are classified on Tier Two and Tier Three behavior supports. So they will facilitate group activities, develop routines for our kids, and social-emotional skills. These are intensive interventions that directly align with our IEP goals and objectives. And the biggest thing that our BCBA's do, and again, this isn't a staffing ad, this is using our current resources and having a space at First Step preschool, but bridging that home and school connection and having parent workshops. So what our kids are directly focusing on in First Step with the behavioral supports, we're also making that connection at home and allowing those skills to flourish when students become school-aged. Lastly, and probably the biggest one, and I talked about this, you know, we have those 15 kids that are placed in the autism scholarship program. And I just want to clarify, you know, that's a parent's choice. So oftentimes, when kids are identified with a disability and we can't serve them full day, they have to look elsewhere. And so that's a parent's choice, and that's where we lose that funding to scholarships. But we want to have that full-day program setting. A full-day program, and it really would look like a mini ACES, serving students with intensive disabilities, students with that AU label with a multiple disabilities label, and developing criteria. So if our kids are moving from First Step, they're in a day program, they have access to peer models, they have access to all of these additional resources and supports, they are much more well-equipped to transition from preschool to school age, either in a self-contained or an inclusion setting. And so when we're looking at these four classrooms, this is how we would utilize to enhance our programming at the preschool First Step level.
Yeah, and we appreciate that outline, and really would look forward to the ability to improve our services at First Step for, again, students that, you know, we have that legal obligation to provide the best education possible for. So I wanted to go through just some frequently asked questions or questions that have come up through this conversation. And again, anything we don't ask, we look forward to the conversation at the end with our board here. Do other school districts have daycare? Very few. Bay Village, Lakewood, Fairview Park, and Orange are the only school districts who are still acting as a fiscal agent for any type of preschool childcare. Interestingly enough, none offer infant care, which we do. So again, you know, in the area, we are the only school district offering infant care as the fiscal agent. The other piece that's really critical here, and when you really read through some of the letters and emails we got, all of them operate 12 months and mandate that their families pay tuition for 12 months. So for instance, when you read one of the letters from someone who lived outside of town, and she explained, you know, why she drove her child here, you know, in large part, yes, it's because of the quality we provide. And no one is debating the quality that we provide. These folks are outstanding professionals who have really honed their craft over some of them, you know, decades. But, you know, that reason about driving it from out of town is because we don't charge for 12 full months. So if you're able to access Bay Village, Lakewood, Fairview Park, or Orange, realize that you're going to pay three more months. And again, so, you know, we're subsidizing for, you know, essentially that discounted care. A common question, and I understand this, couldn't we just charge higher rates? And then continue to operate the daycare? It wouldn't just be a small increase. It would be a $67 per week increase, which works out to $268 per month. So it's a significant deficit that we'd have to crawl out of. That's if we're using the $70,000 as the deficit. And, you know, again, we use $70,000 as the deficit because that was pre-COVID. If we were looking at $90,000, obviously, it's substantially higher. Folks have asked, you know, what's the current capacity? 12, 14, and 36, depending on the age group. So obviously, we're below that. How do we market? We use our website. We're largely word of mouth because it has been, you know, a popular program. I think this is where it comes to, you know, a common question. We know that there's been a motion. We know that there have been some really well-written and well-articulated, you know, thoughts about what Pleasant View Daycare has meant. But, you know, if we were to sustain the program and say, you know, we're going to try to increase enrollment, one clear disadvantage is that we're not going to be able to expand what we do at First Step for, again, the students that we serve, we're legally mandated to serve, those students that are leaving elsewhere, and then we never get back and continue to pay, you know, tuition for at a significant cost. So we'd never be able to use those four classrooms if we don't close that daycare system. The risks, you know, we appeal largely to educators because since we don't operate in the summer, the only folks who are really going to choose us, or by and large, the folks who are going to choose this is if they have, you know, some type of alternate arrangement in June, July, and August when we're not open. We would risk that, you know, the rates would increase and not be affordable to parents. The concern there would be if, you know, we don't get a certain tuition, and now we haven't been clear in terms of a timeline of closing the center. Now we're leaving people scrambling right around the first day of school, or gosh forbid, we had to close the center in the middle of the school year. So we're trying to be clear in terms of a timeline of letting people know by the end of February, hey, this isn't going forward, and so you're going to need to find some type of alternate arrangement. And then the final piece is, you know, continuing sort of an ethical dilemma of funding a program that's commonly used by non-taxpayers with subsidies from our own parents. You know, if I'm a Parma dad and I've got to pick up an extra shift because, you know, I'm going to have to pay for more extended daycare, and I'm paying more for it because we're raising our rates, and now I find out, by the way, part of that rate raise subsidizes folks who don't even live in the district, well, I've got a real, I've got a real problem with that as a Parma taxpayer. Folks have asked, could we expand our First Step continuum of services elsewhere? You know, you really can't if you want that full, least restrictive environment. You want those students educated in their common environment, just like we have, you know, units in our schools. You know, lockdown Parma Senior High, you'll see many different disabilities interacting, at least in some ways, with general education students. And so that's what we would want for First Step. And then finally, a common question is, could we move the daycare? You know, it's popular. We've seen that people really, really like this. Could we just move it? You know, we could, certainly, but where? The only real building that we've identified as part of our future, at least under what we operate right now, which is the master plan that you adopted in December 2019, the only building that is really going to stay is Parma Senior High. And quite frankly, space at Parma Senior High right now, you know, we took a good chunk of that wing for ACES. We chose Parma Senior High for ACES because it was part of our building future. So I'm not sure we want to take, again, precious permanent improvement dollars to serve a population that I know I keep coming back to this point, that we don't have a legal obligation to serve. Let us concentrate our dollars. Let us concentrate our resources. And space is a part of resource for the students that are here and are going to be here and that we want to stay in our district. Those are the students we're leaving right now. This is very similar to the collab in terms of emotion. You know, and folks talked about the collab providing great, you know, services. The collab does provide great services. There was never an argument about the collab's utility in our community. But there was an argument about, should we continue to be the fiscal agent for that? Should we continue to put resources into something that doesn't meet the needs of students who are legally our students? And you let us say no to that, and you let us move on from that. We know there's a motion. It's a great program. The program is served by phenomenally talented staff members. Those staff members, by and large, if they want jobs with us next year, we'll get them. There's teachers that will be able to access some type of title position. Our folks who are the classified staff will have the opportunity to test and place into our classified positions. So those services aren't going to go away. They're just going to be relocated into something different. So with that, and again, I appreciate your attention. I appreciate the opportunity to really broadly outline what we're considering, but I'm open to any questions at this point.
Real quickly, just a quick recap, I think, on things not legally mandated. So in reality, you're saying this is kind of a luxury, and for people that work in our district but do not live in our district, so their children won't go to school here, it's kind of even a perk in a sense. How many rooms are in use at Pleasant View, and how many rooms do they have?
Pleasant View is completely used, so there are no empty rooms right now, and four of them are used for the actual daycare.
Okay, that's, I just wanted, yeah, I thought that, but I just wanted to get that out there. And the one, and this is the only question I'm going to ask, really. I think it's the overriding one. You've hit it already. But it's been in literally just about every correspondence that's come through and every conversation I've had, even with other board members. And that is the feasibility of not using any EDC money anymore. Because I agree that people that are paying that, it should just be going for before and after-school services. So using no more EDC money, having a full-day First Step, bringing those kids back, so we're not paying $283,000, and having a fiscally sound daycare program, regardless of the cost, that comes back to your old, you know, simple supply and demand curve from economics. And again, I probably don't know the answer to that because we don't know how many people can afford, you know, the total increases and so on and so forth. So, you know, that's a multifaceted question, but that's the one that has been predominant over the last week. And can we do it all, or is that kind of a little bit ridiculous even as?
No, I mean, it is, listen, and I respect this conversation, and I respect that, you know, the board is listening to constituents and being very sensitive to what we've heard, and we want to be sensitive to that as well. But the question would be where? You know, we certainly don't want to have, you know, First Step be First Step, 67% of it is a Pleasant View, and then we move 33% to somewhere else. That certainly isn't, you know, that's not coherent. So the question is then, where do we put the daycare? And now the question is, how much do we want to invest in retrofitting? And again, in my estimation, it would only be Parma Senior High that would be the answer because that's the only building that, at least bulk of that building, is, you know, set for our master plan for our future. You know, how much money do we want to invest into retrofitting for a program that, again, is a luxury, really? So that would be the question.
All right. Board members, the floor is open.
I don't know. I think he answered most of my questions during his presentation here. What was the number of employees? I was looking for it on the thing that it affects.
12, I believe. Is that accurate?
Is it 12?
Yeah. Tiffany's nodding. I don't, Rose, did you have anything different for that? My memory is 12.
It's 12.
And you anticipate all 12 of them can be absorbed back into the district somewhere else?
Yeah. Tiffany, you want to talk through that a little bit? We met with Lloyd Rains and Fran Niebusch, who runs that, that association.
There's specific language in the Children's Services Contract to bump into classifications on the other side of the OPEC contract. In addition, there are the certified educators, which are considered classified, have specific licensure that we always have openings for in July. So when our federal funds come in, many of those educators hold a pre-K3 certification or a K7 at which they could serve as a title teacher. We're always in need of educational assistance and special ed assistance. They would just have to take a pair protest, which we offer at the district. So it's very feasible and it's very realistic.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, I think that was, but my other one was a big thing was a raise of fees, but you answered that pretty good, so, pretty well. So I'm not too worried about it. Doesn't look like a difficult thing.
Amanda, any more from you?
I do. And Charlie, I apologize because a couple of them popped up as you were giving your presentation. So the one, I had mentioned this before, so our daycare is a four-star to step up to quality, and it's only one of three. to step up to quality, and it's only one of three in the PCSD area. And are we certain that we can't? I know this would involve moving the daycare because I am 100% on board that the continuum of services and what we want to do with those spaces are phenomenal. My question is, could we leverage that step up to quality in terms of, you know, capitalizing, we're already lower in tuition, comparatively speaking. If we did move it, could we capitalize on that? And I know it's it would be a Palmer Senior High, and I know you said that, but if you're mis, if I didn't ask it, if we added a fifth classroom and eliminated the waitlist that exists for next year to increase enrollment and then kind of did a marketing campaign to see if it was, if it was feasible, not feasible, but to see if we could turn it into a, you know, profit-making center versus, you know, running a deficit. Like, is that at all possible? Do we know anything about, like, those stars and if we could utilize that in any capacity?
Yeah, I mean, a few, a few points and 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 first, you're right about the four-star, and I think that's that's great, you know, testimony to the work that our staff has done. You know, but a few things. First, you know, you'd see that substantial tuition raise. So, you know, you're talking about a $67 a week increase. And second, a- again, you're up against, you know, do we want to make that type of investment into infrastructure? And again, I I think it would have to be a Palmer Senior High for, you know, a a a program that isn't mandated, and quite frankly, it's very uncommon in our area. Rose, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there is a waitlist i- i- in any way. Am I correct about that?
There is not. Can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
Oh, okay. My apologies. I was, in one of the letters, it was referenced, so I
Yeah, there's no
Okay, good.
A- a- again, I mean, I I I think to to really kind of summarize your question, Mrs. Carpus, we we could. It's a matter of what do we want to make a priority and where do we want to spend our money? And, you know, again, I would side on the, you know, fact of serving the students that we're, we have a legal obligation to serve.
So on that note, I have two more questions. Are we able to decrease, even if it's only a few dollars, the EDC rates back down that we raised to subsidize the daycare?
You know, we had that conversation with with Mrs. Gross yesterday, and she thought one more year at this level, and then after that, we'd be able to look at it. And I don't know, Rose, you want to explain sort of the rationale you were talking about?
Actually, I I was kind of hoping for a moderate increase for next year in the hope that we could rebound enough to hold those rates then for several years beyond, is what I was going for. Because we're we're hurting in EDC as well because of because of all the parents who have left us because of only offering two days a week childcare. We're hoping to get right back to it, and I think we can. But a little modest increase for next year would be helpful.
Okay. And then my last question would be with offering the BCBA's, the BCABAs at the preschool level, are we hiring new ones or are we utilizing the ones that we already have?
We are utilizing the ones that we already have.
None of that First Step sort of enhancements that we outlined have any increase in staff. It's it's simply, and I I really have spared the board the weeds here. But there's eight and four models versus six and six models, and so we're going to change from six and six or change from eight and fours to six and six. And so that lets us shift around staffing at First Step. So there's no actual increase in staffing to be able to to utilize that, those four rooms.
Okay, and then we that we will still have enough to service our students at the upper levels then too, right?
Correct. And and BCBA's, and we've had this conversation as a senior leadership team. To me, they're they're worth their weight in gold.
Absolutely.
As we look at getting, you know, some additional cares funds and and getting some additional wellness dollars, and as those things become reality, BCBA's is at the top of our priority list.
Fantastic.
Again, that's not necessarily general fund expenditure. That's from some of the additional funding that's coming from the state and federal government. Again, not no specific plans at this point, but it is on the top of our priority list as we get additional funding.
All right. Cindy, what do you got?
I appreciate the presentation and actually the offer or the opportunity to have this work session, Charlie, because you've answered many of the questions that have been brought forth this past week, and that's much appreciated. So thank you for that. I had I'm trying to think of, I'm I'm looking through all my questions from the past week. And I'm I'm trying to think if anything really has not been addressed.
I tried, and and I I appreciate all the board sending sending those questions ahead of time. It really does help us to prepare. So Mrs. Brodsky, I'm sorry if I missed any. I tried to answer your questions.
No, I I kind of inundated you with
No, listen, it's Better to be able to have some time to prepare. It it really helps us.
Well, I appreciate it because you brought forth a lot of information that perhaps wasn't on the surface of what we might have known. Well, I I just first of all, want to really commend that staff over at the daycare center for the work that they do because they are clearly highly dedicated professionals that care deeply about the children that they serve. And the children have been well-served. And, you know, with that in mind, I, you know, while we're not legally mandated to serve this population, I look at it as an investment in the general future of community, serving children well. And so I thank them for that and appreciate the work that's been done there. And I'm just, this is just thrown out as as a thought for the future. I don't know, you know, what will happen exactly here, but with the new administration in Washington DC now, I think that education will get a much better look and better attention than it has in the last few years. And certainly, there's been a lot of conversation about early childhood education programs, how critical they are to the development of children and it being an educational priority, hopefully, for this administration. And I know the the daycare program is far more than daycare. It has a curriculum and educational components that serve our children. And I just would like to have us be open to the possibility of this being a viable program sometime for Palmer Schools because it does foster the development of these children, which is something that eventually would perhaps benefit us in the in the school district as they become students here, although I do realize many do not. And if it could be marketed well and more well-known for the quality that it provides and the the, you know, just the availability of the program, I think it would be something that we could consider first priority going to residents of the district and or maybe a a separate rate, which would be higher for non-residents in the district. So anyway, those are my, just my thoughts that
Yeah.
About that as a possibility in the future.
I I think, and and this is really a a really broad picture, but I think the entire district, certainly the senior leadership team, and I will speak for the board, but I'm imagining, you know, the board as well. Our goal would be to expand early childhood education. It would be through the First Step program, though, not through through a daycare. The the issue for for us, and and this is not a complaint, but just, you know, simply stating, we're a little bit hamstrung in terms of long-term planning by not knowing exactly what our building future is. We would love to to essentially double the size of First Step, honestly, but where are we going to do that right now? And and where do you want to put money into, again, knowing that all of our buildings have been declared obsolete by the state of Ohio? So I 100% agree with you that early childhood education is extremely important. We would love to expand First Step programming. This, in fact, is an expansion of First Step programming. But again, our our concentration would be specifically in, you know, that actual, you know, preschool component, not the preschool daycare component.
Hey, thank you. I'm just hopeful that more resources become available through the federal government as a priority somehow, either in, you know, help for families of being able to afford that or certainly for school districts to be able to consider providing more early childhood education.
Agreed.
Excellent. Charlie, quick question. If we decide to eliminate the daycare program between now and next school year, even between now and summer, is there any possibility that, you know, we could ourselves even do a little research so that, you know, we can help these families or make good recommendations to other places, you know, nearby? Just in delivering, and you know this, just in delivering, you know, information regarding levies and stuff. I mean, I made several stops. There there there's places all over. I mean, they're not, you know, step up the quality that we have necessarily, but there's some that are close. And I know that there is some really good, quite honestly, preschool programs in the area that, you know, my own kids and and grandkids have gone to. So I just think that, you know, that might be, I I don't think it'd be that difficult. Maybe I'm way off base here, but, you know, if we close this that, you know, we could work with the parents over the next couple of months in the program to make, you know, some recommendations on where they can go for their child's needs and, you know, what's what would be best for them and so on and so forth. Does that sound like something we could even do?
Yeah, no, 100%. In fact, we've already done some of that research. We 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 have, you know, sort of that 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 bank of resources as well as, you know, how much it costs in tuition. We you know, obviously, we've sat on that, not not having a final resolution. But but that's 100% doable, and I think it's a great suggestion.
That's all I have.
All right, I just have one more thing. You kind of touched base on this about how emotional this is and how, you know, it is a lot of emotion, and we've heard from teachers and families and past families and you know, as a board, our job is to listen to what they have to say and to hear them out and to answer their questions. And I truly feel like this work session gave us the opportunity to get answers to all of the questions and to not minimize the work that that staff has done over the years. But I also want to acknowledge the senior leadership team because one thing that has kind of been an underlying theme this entire work session is our priorities and where we're supposed to be as a school district and where our responsibilities lie. And as hard as that is for me to sometimes reconcile because these are kids and you know, I look at a child and it doesn't matter if they're PCSD or if they're Bay Village or whatever. You know, sometimes you got to come back to that reality of the population that you were elected to serve. And I think Dr. Smilak, you really hit the nail on the head when we say, you know, we're underserving those kids. And I think about Gwen and the difference that this expanded programming could have possibly had for her. And I, she's far from the only child that would benefit from it. And so looking forward, I think that, you know, I'm hopeful that any daycare facility that the 22, you know, students we currently serve are placed in have wonderful experiences. And I'm at this point, looking forward to the idea of being able to truly enhance the offerings for our students at First Step. And I thank you guys for kind of helping us hone in on that.
Oh, we agree. I mean, I I just, again, I I really appreciate the opportunity to have the work session. I I it's tough when, you know, things start coming in the day of, and we all get emotional. And and so I I really appreciate that we, you know, we pulled that resolution and 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 again, took our time to have this conversation today because, you know, we we had to articulate the why. And I think hopefully, it's at least, you know, giving you a a better understanding of of why that that resolution was ever there. So thank you.
Also, Dr. Smilak, I appreciate this really comprehensive presentation that you've made today. Could you please forward your outline of everything to the board members so that we
Yeah, we emailed that at about 9:50 today.
Yeah.
All right, just getting ready to clock in, so sorry. Thank you. I appreciate that because that's a lot of important and valuable information as well.
Yep, absolutely.
Charlie, I know that Jack is not with us today, and I mean, he's currently undergoing, you know, some treatments for some health issues and stuff. If I talk to him and he's willing, would you be able to do a a little bit of a one-on-one conversation with him between now and the next board meeting?
100%. We want him to, you know, feel comfortable with whatever his vote might be is, you know, having the education behind it to vote that way. So
All right. I I figured that was the answer. I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, Jack will be involved. He's he's not blowing this off at all. I got nothing.
I'm good. I think he answered all my questions.
Okay, anybody else? Well, thank you, guys. Well, then I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0289 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt Resolution 2021-0289. Or I'll call Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Switzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2021-0289 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.